Really?
Yeah. So is Zoom running? Okay. Thank you for coming and welcome. First off, I think is Leo, Leo has at COVID risk, I think is what he described it. But I forget if, is he online by any chance Owen? Okay. All right. So he said he may. So if he's, if he does, can you look him up if he's not here? And we don't need to do the full roll call, state your name. But I'd love a motion to adjourn. Second. Okay, good. And a roll call. I guess we don't do that. I'm looking at Michelle as the expert here. Okay. First we'll do is take public input. Members of the public are welcome to comment during the public input period, either here on the microphone or through Zoom. If you're on Zoom, raise your Zoom hand. We ask that you turn on your camera, state your name and address, and follow school committee policy for public input, including speaking for no more than three minutes and only on topics under the purview of the school committee. So is there any public input here in the room or on Zoom? And if it's like the, somebody here.
Just three quick comments. I was disappointed that at five thirty tonight, I went in to look at the meeting documents and the budget presentation or any of the details that had been in that said were in the packet could not be found at five thirty. And this is especially surprising, given the fact that the, what I can see now in the packet is a request for almost a six percent increase. So that was, you know, we're talking about district communication. This is where a good place to start is to make sure that this information is in the packet. The other thing that I wanted to stress with regard to the budget and also with regard to policy is I noticed on the list of, in the narrative, the various donations that are going to be reviewed and approved tonight. We have received at least a couple of state grants that have, that I have not been able to see come before the school committee for approval. Based on information that I got from the state, there was a school nutrition equip, equipment assistance and also a grant received for teacher diversity, teacher diversification pilot program. So according to Mass General Law and our policy, those grants need to be approved by school committee and they never came before. And then lastly, with regard to other proceeds, we have yet to see the amount that was donated to the district for the mattress sale. And in fact, that campaign, that fundraising campaign was run by staff, which is also against school policy. So I just wanted to put that on the public record for tonight as part of the budget discussion. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. And I just heard budget donations, specific nutrition assistance and teacher diversification. Was it Metro Sound? I just, did everyone else hear that? The third one was it, oh, the mattress sale. I've been doing the mattress sale for years. Thank you. Is there any other public input? Okay. All right, great. Next up is the consent agenda. The first one is the regular meeting minutes for eleven sixteen twenty-three. And the second is the donations. And I asked Dr. Morrison to just walk through the donations.
Sure. We have a lot of donations this time. Eight hundred forty dollars from the Wheelock PTO paid directly to Conley Bus Company for grade three transportation in Rocky Woods. One hundred dollars from Wheelock PTO paid directly to Mobile Ed for an added time slot for the Earth Dome performance. Thirty-three thousand dollars, thirty-three thousand, forty-six dollars and one cent from MCPE to fund the following grants. The amount of each grant will be deposited in the appropriate schools gift account. Four hundred fifty dollars for the flexible seating grant at Dale Street. Three thousand one hundred fourteen dollars for the ride, excuse me, read, ride and rejuvenate grant at Dale Street. Two thousand seven hundred fifty-three dollars, fifty cents for decodable texts for science or reading instruction at Memorial. Six hundred seventy-three dollars and seventy-six cents for kindergarten phenomic, phenomic awareness tools at Memorial. Six hundred dollars for adaptive art program grant at Memorial. Five hundred and five, five hundred ninety-nine dollars for three doodlers at Wheelock. Seven hundred forty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents for the slant board at Wheelock. Six thousand six hundred sixty-one dollars for the Medfield High School video student grant. Fifteen thousand dollars for Empowering Communities Professional Development Grant for Blake and Middle School, Blake and Medfield High School. Two thousand one hundred forty-six dollars for Empowering Belonging Grant at Blake and three hundred dollars for script writers grant at Blake. I ask that you approve and accept these grants and donations as presented.
Okay. And I think we, it's a consent agenda, so is either one of these need to be called out? I think I suspect I know the answer. No? Okay. There are motion to approve the consent agenda as discussed. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Great. Going to new business, our student, I think we're going to start with the student advisory. And thank you for coming.
Hello, I'm Julia Keating. I'm the representative for the class twenty-four. To start off, in mid-November, we hired a donut truck as a surprise for the seniors to help calm the nerves of future planning. This was a success and the seniors loved it. On December first, we had our first junior senior winter semi this year. We had many generous parents, generous parents donate snacks and water, which was a big help considering you were around three hundred and fifty students in attendance. And lastly, we are creating pendant flags that will say Medfield for anyone to purchase in the new year. It's a target at the seniors for them to put in their dorms next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Thanks.
Hello. I'm Michael Roth. I'm the rep to the school committee for the class of twenty twenty-five. So some of the things that we've been doing is we started reselling the Medfield leashes. We had a Google form and we're just, that's open again for December, just kind of for the holidays. We're also planning on doing a code drive with Cradles to Crayons after winter break or holiday break. And then the last week or this week, Monday, we sent out a Google form asking the juniors and seniors what they would like their prom theme to be. And we're now in the process of finalizing our choice for the theme. And I also just want to touch on the winter dance for the juniors and seniors. We, we just helped out with decorating and also thank you to, to all the parents who bought food and just other decorations.
Thank you. Thanks. Are the leashes the white ones? Those the white leashes that you guys had last time?
I think they're blue.
Are they blue? Okay.
Yeah. But we, we sent out like an email last week or something, but.
I was gonna ask too, any, any top themes for prom?
I think right now it's between the Great Gatsby and Hollywood.
Both good choices. Great Gatsby. Oldest would love it.
Hi, my name's Athena Paul Cronus and I'm here on behalf of the class of twenty twenty-six. As of right now, not much has changed since last meeting. Right now, we're in the middle of a gift card fundraiser. So shameless plug, if you'd like to support, go to www raiseright.com or go to Concerned Citizens. We posted the link there and there's steps to be able to buy your gift cards. So thank you. One of the focuses of the class advisors is not only fundraising, but also community service. So we recently connected with someone at the senior center about shoveling driveways. So as of right now, we have over nine teams who signed up to shovel driveways this winter. Additionally, we rescheduled our grades movie night that was touched on last meeting, I think. And we're hoping to set a date sometime this March if all goes well with the gym. And now, I mean, as of right now, halfway through term two, we've been accustomed to the year pretty well and things have been going pretty good. So it's gonna be, thank you.
Thank you, Marshall. Great. Great job. Thanks for pitching tonight. Thanks for pitching tonight. Appreciate it.
I'm Ashley Castangino. I'm the representative for the class of twenty twenty-seven. So we just started and we're finishing tomorrow. We did a basket to, and we sold tickets using my school bucks. And we had some different like Medfield gear and blankets and things in it. And we sold the tickets for five dollars each and we made eight hundred and ten dollars from that. So yeah.
That's great. Okay. Thank you. I think that's, that's it. I, any other comments here while you have your friends and peers around?
Oh, I guess a lot of stuff on the, for senior council. We, so we're all on senior council together and we're planning our spirit week for next week just to get everyone through like the last week before break. And we're doing a spirit week and we have the candy canes and then all the money that we get from the candy canes is going to go to a charity. And I think we're in between like two or three, so we just have to make a final though. And then also for community service, we did our second visit to New Pond, which is like an elderly home in Wolfville. And this time we built gingerbread houses with, or we decorated gingerbread houses with them. So we did that on Monday.
Excellent.
That's what we've been doing.
No, it's great. I'd love to hear the culture. So much of it is, it's not just raising money, but it's also the community service, which is, which is awesome. Awesome to hear. Yeah, I imagine we're, we're excited for things to wind down next week.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure there's, there's more excitement over here on this side or. But I think that speaks for all of us. Okay. Well, thank you and for the student advisory, you're more than welcome to stay. But, but we, we would be surprised if you did. Yeah, thank, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for standing in.
Bye. Good job.
So next up is the MCAS, two thousand twenty-three MCAS results.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Christine and I will head up here. Well, thank you for the opportunity tonight. We are going to present our twenty twenty-three MCAS. We're going to look at our review of grades three through ten. There's some slides on that and Christine and I will take turns on that and then look at how we rank statewide. So one of the neat things we have an opportunity to look at is this new software or new database that the state has given us called MCAS Explorer, which allows us to look at how we do, how each kid does, and then actually compare what we're doing with the state and it actually ranks for us. So we'll share some of those rankings and then Christine will go through the MCAS Explorer and talk a little bit about how we use that data and how we use it to perform our instruction learning. So I'll go through the third grade MCAS. Third grade MCAS is really an important one for every school district. It really is a cumulative test for pre-K, K one, two, and three. So we always want to do well in this test and really kind of gauge what we're doing in terms of our language arts and math in third grade. So as you can see, we, we wanted to put the two thousand nineteen scores up there because that was pre-COVID and compare that to last year and this year's scores. Because I know we hear a lot, lots of times by media and what you hear out there about learning loss over COVID. And I think we did a real good job with our kids and our teachers did a fantastic job making sure that, you know, our kids were up to date and working hard during COVID. And then we, we did some boot camp stuff in the summertime where we had kids that were at risk the last two summers, providing them additional instruction. So I think we've come out of COVID better than most. But if you look at the scores, you'll see we'll go through the nineteen and the twenty threes as well. But seventy-six percent of our Wheelock students score exceeding or meeting expectations, while only forty-four percent of the state did in two thousand and three. So we're certainly ahead of the state in two thousand and twenty-three in math. Mathematics was strong as well, with seventy-eight percent of Wheelock students scoring exceeding or meeting expectations, while only forty-one percent of the state students score exceeding expectations.
Everyone. I also want to just reiterate that in terms of looking at this from the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty-three numbers is to really remember that if you talk to any teacher across the district, they're going to say that last year and really this year is really a feeling of normalcy. So to see the numbers that we see in nineteen to twenty, to twenty-three is really powerful just in terms of where we come. So just looking at grade four, again, looking at just the, where we are and where we're going is that you see that ELA, we have sixty-nine percent are either exceeding or meeting expectations. And well, math really doing incredibly strong with eighty-two percent of students at Dale. And the one thing I keep in mind is that, and I'm really proud of the, across the elementary, is that we were piloting at this time elementary, elementary math program. So to see numbers like this, truly outstanding. Sorry. Okay. Thanks. Grade, grade five, similar numbers, really incredibly strong numbers in terms of you see where we are with seventy-five percent of Dale Street students in ELA, either meeting or exceeding, as well as seventy-four percent. So incredibly strong numbers with there. And you look at that also with the comparisons of where we were in two thousand and nineteen. Science, first year of the science, in terms of grade five where it's measured. And you'll see that our numbers are very good on that in terms of looking at sixty-seven percent of folks who are either meeting or exceeding. Grade six, we start looking at course transitions as we always do and really looking at the numbers. And still, you still see into very strong numbers in terms of ELA. You have seventy-two percent of students who are meeting or exceeding expectations. And the other thing is to keep in mind also, just, and I, I want to mention, we have the, the final column for the state. And it's always nice to see the state, but keep in mind that we are really looking above and beyond the state average. So this is an example of seventy-two percent in ELA for Blake students meeting or exceeding versus forty-two for the state. Math, sixty-one percent of, of meeting or exceeding. And, and really looking at those numbers that we can really focus on. Grade seven, again, strong performance by our students. We'll be looking at seventy-seven percent meter exceeding in ELA and another sixty-nine percent in, in our math. Grade eight, we are also in the sixty-eight percent range in the high sixties. With, with that, I'll notice that you have a number that is very similar to the two thousand nineteen numbers that are happening there, as well as in math with sixty percent. Science, really strong. And you'll see that with seventy-five percent of Blake students meeting or exceeding expectations in science. And grade ten, so the grade ten is really where it all comes together in terms of the end. And our numbers have been phenomenal. And you'll look at the difference with where we are. Eighty-five percent of our high school students meet or exceed the standards. And if you look at that compared to, for instance, fifty-eight percent in Massachusetts. And math as well, eighty-three percent, incredibly strong performance by our tenth grade students.
You know, several years ago, that tenth grade test was based on eighth grade standards, but the state has, has changed that. So if you looked at, there were numbers years ago where ninety-eight percent were advanced proficient. What was called back then in Medfield in the high nineties, that's all changed. They, they based the, the new test on actual tenth grade standard instead of the eighth grade. So our, our kids are really performing well there.
And science. This is the one thing, and Jeff's gonna show a future slide focusing on this, but really amazing performance by our, our science group. And look, it's eighty-seven percent. And that's something that in a future slides, Jeff will talk a little bit more about.
So as I said before, the new software and database allows us to really dig deeper into some of this data. It disaggregates it by student, by school, by, we can actually go in there and see, you know, we can disaggregate by the type of student. And any, if a student has an IP, a five oh four, a student, an EL student. So we can really dig down deep into this data and go through it. But one of the other things it does is it ranks your scores compared to the rest of the state. So if you look at our grade three, four ELA, ELA and math, so we were sixth in the state for language arts and fifth in the state in mathematics this past year for MCAS scores. And again, the numbers on the right, the districts statewide, that will change based on the structure of some districts. Some districts are K to six districts, some districts are just high school, some are seven through twelve districts. So that's why you'll see how the numbers don't match up on the right-hand side because. because um, depending on where the districts, how they're structured, uh, the number goes up or down. Uh, you'll see our grade four, again, ELA, sixteenth in the state in math, fourth in the state. I get strong, strong scores there. Uh, grade five, ninth in the state uh, for ELA and nineteenth in the state for math, thirty-fourth in the state uh, for science. So when you look at those numbers and you're thinking in terms of three hundred and sixteen districts that had a grade five that took it, then those are really strong scores for our grades uh, three, four, and five kids. Um, the color code on the bottom, just in case you, the top ten is a darker blue, the light blue is the top twenty-five. And then if it's not, then at least the top twenty-five, it's in, it's in one. So grade six, seven, and eight, um, we look at our ELA in grade six, uh, ranked fifteenth in the state out of three twenty-five. Uh, math, not as strong as, as our others at this point, but uh, seventieth out of three twenty-five. Uh, ELA, grade seven, eighth in the state out of three oh one. And math twenty-one, so top twenty-five out of three oh one. And then grade eight, thirty-three and forty-nine, but our science uh, tenth in the state out of three hundred. And we'll get grade ten ranking statewide, ELA and math twenty-four and twenty-one, there's that strong science again, um, third in the state out of three hundred. So if you um, aggregate the grade three through eight and then keep uh, ten as a standalone and look at the overall rankings in districts uh, statewide, ELA grades three to eight was eleventh in the state. Uh, math was sixteenth and science was nineteenth when we aggregated altogether. And then back to grade ten, twenty-four, twenty-one, and then three. As we said, we want to really look at the comparisons that we have um, for two nineteen, the pre-COVID numbers. And you'll see that when we aggregate that together, ELA uh, seventy-five to seventy-three, so fairly close, seventy-one, seventy-two, um, sixty-nine and seventy-one. So we're really either at or a little bit above the, the two nineteen levels. Um, and then looking at grade ten above seventy-five to eighty-nine, then eighty-four to eighty-two, which is essentially the same. And then eighty-seven uh, for science and that, which is really a, you know, three, third in the state. Um, at one point, was it last year, Christine, you were one in the state when we looked at it? The last year or the year before, we're number one in the state for tenth grade science. So our science continues to be really strong at high school.
So you can see that the scores overall are really strong and really want to commend our faculty and our students for, for incredible work and our administrators. But we always use the data and we always look at the data to really enrich our, our thoughts and our, our processes going forward. So this is where we start to geek out because there's a lot of different things we can use the data, especially with the tool that Jeff highlighted. So the data goes back and we, we look at it in many different ways and then should reflect upon what are our strengths and also really focus on what are areas that we can improve. And so these are just some ways that we're, that we use the data. So first of all, on the left column really talks about our item analyses. Our item analyses are done within the classroom level or, or grade level teams, as well as it's something that's done by building leaders and department chairs. And that's really looking at item by item by item by item. Everything on the MCAS is aligned to our standards and our standards are aligned to our curricula. So it allows us to really look at in a really deep way, and I'll show you how we do that, that what are our strengths? Where are we really excelling? And where could we have gaps? Is there something that, for instance, if there's overlap or we're not spending enough time on? And so these are the, the amounts of, of the, the detail that we go into in terms of item analysis. We also look at trends. We look at in terms of over time, what are some adjustments? Maybe we made a curricular adjustment a couple of years ago and are we seeing that pay off or anything that we need to do? Um, and also, again, really focusing specifically on how do these specific items that are aligned to the curricula, these specific standards, and where do they show up? So it's really important for us to look at, this is one piece of a larger data set, including our curriculum in terms of the spec and, and the different items that are there. The extra level that we do is grade level, department level, and leadership team discussions. We do frequent data dives and we look at data in a variety of different ways. So for example, that on the leadership team, we meet monthly and every uh, as part of our regular meetings, once a month, we really go deeply into a, a specific aspect of the data. For instance, looking at uh, uh, item analysis or, or student growth. For instance, it's just some, but just looking at different nuances. And again, the tool that I'm about to highlight will really help with that. But we're looking at, at the five thousand foot view. Overall, what is the trend that's happening across the district? What are some adjustments that we, we can make? What are some things that we can celebrate and actually share? That if something is happening in particular in one school, that we can share the best practices to other schools. And so these are just examples of, of that we're looking at. It's really also important that the tools that I'm about to show will allow us to really drill down and look at different data groups. It's not just overall, but also looking at different subgroups in terms of how do our students excel? But then also, also in terms of, are there certain subjects, students that aren't as excelling as well? And then what we can do to support them uh, more strongly.
So it's just to that point of what we do with leadership. Uh, at our, you know, our first or second meeting in December, I forget when it was, we, we looked at student growth percentile, which we're gonna share it at a future meeting with you folks. Um, and one of the things that we think is really important is the SGP, the student growth percentile. So that, that tells us, you know, how much growth a kid has made in a year on that test. And, and it's really an apples-to-apples comparison uh, that you can look at. So just a quick kind of primer on how it works. It's, if your child scores, let's say, a five-ten on, on a scale score on MCAS, they're put into a cohort of kids in across the state. Every kid that scored five-ten is in that cohort. And then the following year, they take the test and then their, their uh, results on that test are compared against every other kid in that cohort. And they calculate the student growth percentile. So it really shows, you know, what the influence of one year can be or one course could be on, on a student. So that, that's a really good measure that we like to see, where a student uh, growth percentile average is fifty. Moderate defined by the state is forty to sixty. And then we'd like to see everything, you know, above fifty. So I think district-wide, we're fifty-two or fifty-three or something this year, district-wide on all tests as a growth of over fifty. Um, some, some higher, some a little bit lower. But our goal was to be fifty or above and all that student growth. And we have lots of examples of, of what that might look like for, with kids. And this, this tool that um, Christine will share with you allows us to do that right down to the student.
So this is MCAS Explorer. It's by a organization called Open Architects. And it really has so many levels of nuanced data that it just, I, I have spent hours looking at it and I can get lost in that and I'm sure many people have. Uh, but this is just examples of the different types of data that we can get. And I do want to actually just talk about in terms of whenever we have a data discussion, it always starts with, what do you notice and what do you wonder? These two open-ended questions are asked at the beginning of all our data sessions to really allow a permeation and just of, of discussion points in terms of, what do people see? Is there trends or there, are there different aspects? Because there's so much there. And then, then from there, we build our conversations themselves, whether it's with the leadership team or if it's with individual department chairs, really looking at their particular data or their grade level, et cetera. So this is the overview, it's the dashboard. And it's just, for this one is, I believe, yep, it is high school math. Uh, so it's high school math and really looking at some major, like, from a five thousand foot view in terms of overall students' proficiencies, as well as comparisons by year in the middle. And then it also looks at us, uh, looks at our performance by student growth percentile. I want you to also notice that second band along the top, every single one is a pull-down, allowing us to look at different individual subgroups, whether it is uh, for IEP five oh four, low income, EL, high needs, and race, et cetera. So we can really look at a really detailed level in terms of how our subgroups are performing. Sorry, you got it?
I just wanted, my pointer's not working here, but this here is the student growth percentile. So we always wanna be in this upper right-hand quadrant, which is, you know, growth beyond fifty and then skill scores, you know, above five-twenty in that area. We all wanna be in that area. So uh, what we'll share next time is we'll show you exactly, you know, where we stand by school, by grade level, um, in that, in that graph.
Just if you can see though, the third box in this particular grade, so it's this grade ten math. You'll see a student growth percentile at sixty-three percent, uh, way above, it's above average showing incredible student, see it?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, plus thirteen point one percent above the state average.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that, that's the one that's over the cohort, is that correct?
Right.
That's what it, okay.
Yeah.
When you're doing it for the high school, is that from eighth grade? Cause obviously they take ninth year off, so it would be sixty-three percent higher than their eighth grade.
So this example is from Dale Street. It's our fourth grade math, I believe. And this shows the item analysis and this is so powerful. So on the bottom left side, you'll see the different standards there. And then that really shows at the bottom in terms of our percentage above state average. Now, keep in mind, I said this earlier, it's state average is always helpful to know. Um, but we tend to, to be above that and, and that's something that's.
Our expectation.
Yeah, exactly, basically, right. Above this is the, you'll see the bar graph. That really looks at, it, it condenses all the major themes within this particular, so this case is geometry. And it's, it's looking at all those different standards and it condenses them down. And it allows us to look at it just a, a, a overview of how our students are, are excelling in certain standards. So in cases, geometry, was it eighty, eighty-eight percent?
Eight.
Passed or did well and, and got those answers correct. And then you'll see a little bit further down, for instance, seventy percent measurement in data. Now, we use this in conjunction with the in-house tool that allows, at this point, we can look at that. We can see the particular standards that are at the bottom. And then an in-house tool allows us to really break it down to one level further, which allows us to actually look at the questions themselves, sees what, see what the options were that the students chose. And then really work on that to really think about how to share in terms of, is this the question construction? That's something that shook them up or is this a concept? So we can really look at another layer even beyond this. And so that's an example of us using the second tool. The other thing that this doesn't show is that if you click on any one of those bars, you can actually have a list of the students in terms of who, who passed that, who got that question, those questions correctly and as well, so. And then third, this is a, a scatter plot. And this is always district comparisons. And we can look at districts in a couple of different ways. This one shows, you see all of them in terms of across the entire state. We also look at our, our own particular cohort, cohort in terms of a, we, we are matched with thirteen other districts by size and by demographics. And so we can compare our performance against others. So you see on the bottom right, you'll see in terms of, you'll see that number, um, this is, by the way, this is grade seven and it's um, ELA. So you can see that we are number eight out of three oh one across the state. And we can also drill that down in terms of looking at our comparisons against other districts that are very similar in demographics to ours. And then on the left is that scatter plot. And this goes to what Jeff was saying in terms of, it, it measures our scale score against our student growth percentile. So we want to be on that top right in terms of where we are, showing strong student growth percentile. Growth as well as performance on, as an average score. So these are some examples. The other thing is that there are a couple of tabs I'm not gonna show because that is student-level data. Not only do we can see this across the district, we can actually go down and really look at individual students. So you'll see a two, two things that are there, demographics as well as students. And that allows us to really look at individual student performance, either as a subgroup in terms of when we look at demographics or as individual students, identifying how our individual students did, whether that they are in that uh, that excelling or uh, or, or passing, or they're in that not passing. And how can we support those individual students?
So Tim, when you were in the office last week and went through some of this, you got to see how we could hover over a dot. It'd be, you know, you could probably get a kid's name, you know, you could, all that data right there. You know, it's, it's really impressive how they did. And the state has a contract with this company and this is free for us. This year, I'm hoping it's free for us going forward.
I'm hoping, this has been a game changer. So a typical meeting, for instance, I, we're right now, we are meeting with our department chairs, really looking at this level of data. And we start with, what do you notice, what do you wonder? And at this point, we work and it's building leadership as well as the department chair and me. And we, we, we start looking at different aspects of this and we're like, oh, let's compare this to this. Or, oh, can you look at the concept geometry? What are some things that are some concepts? And then we, together as a group, start brainstorming. What are the phenomenon that's going on that may explain the score? Why are, why are the scores really great? Or where's an area of improvement? And what might be happening there? But that's such as a solid place to start, that we can really now start breaking down. Is this something we can provide curricular support? Is this something we can provide professional development? Is this something we need to look at in terms of the length of time that we teach a specific concept? But these are the level of the detail of the conversations that are coming out of the data. And tools like this enable that to happen.
So prior to this, we used something called Edwin, which was the state had also put together. And we could get similar data, but it was very clunky, it was not easy to use. This is very, very easy to use. And it allows us to, um, and it's quick. We did, Edwin would take, you know, it would take time to load, it was just really difficult. This has been all, this has been a great addition to uh. Just reactions, questions, comments?
I have a quick question. So the EE stands for exceeds expectation, right? And the ME is meets.
Expect.
And then PM is partially meets.
Needs.
And NM is not.
Not.
So when you're looking at those four different uh, options, I guess, do you happen to know like the percentage that a student has to get to be in like an EE versus an ME? I guess I'm wondering like, if we look at, we want our students to be in either EE or ME, what percentage are they getting right to be at, like seventy-five percent or above fifty-five percent?
It's a scale score from four forty to five sixty. So precious excel exceeds is five thirty to five sixty. In terms of the exceeds, five hundred to five twenty-nine, so they're in thirty, thirty-point bands.
So one of the things that we noticed last week when we were looking at individual grade levels and students on the scatter block is that you have many, many kids that are right below, if they're not meeting expectations or partially meeting, they're right below. So there, there could be one or two or three questions away from, from meeting it. So we have a lot of kids in that general direction that we need to bump up a little bit, provide support to.
Wait, but do you know the actual percent, like? Like, let's not answer your question.
What if they were thirty point five percent?
Yeah, but like to, to, to get up to exceeds, do I get seventy percent of the questions right or eighty or ninety? On a scale score from four.
Score, I, yeah. I'd have to look and see, yeah, we just use a sales score, so I'd have to look to see what it is.
Okay.
Yeah, I've never looked to see what the, like a hundred percent.
Like to pass, you need to get like thirty percent of them right.
Yeah, I've never, I've always looked, used a scale and score.
Um, my question was, well, one, what science do we do in tenth grade? Cause I know, I, I know that changes.
Biology.
Biology?
That's the test.
Oh, yeah.
We don't do the physics test.
Oh, yeah, that's a good, good way to start. But anyway, uh, my other one is, so uh, Jeff, you just said like, uh, next time you'll present other data. Uh, when is, is next time, next meeting or like, when is this on the schedule to do MCAS? We haven't figured that out yet.
Whenever, you know, whatever your folks want it.
Oh, yeah.
We can do it at the next meeting, we can do it at the meeting after, whatever.
Okay. Um, like, this, this is awesome. Like, I mean, I think where, where I want to be as someone who lives here, I think all that stuff is good. I guess my question would be, uh, Christine, when you look at the weak, the, the areas of opportunity, right? The weaknesses there, like, it takes this whole year to like come up with the plan. I mean, like generally in education, right? Like you get the data, it takes us a year to study it, to work with the department heads. And then like next year, we'll be trying like new things to pick up these scores or, you know, I mean, to improve the areas of opportunity. Will we get to hear about what changes are made or is, does that come up to this level or not really?
If you want to, sure.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I think I'd be, cause there's, there's just a couple, like the only thing that stood out to me was uh, I think sixth grade had a drop from nineteen to twenty-two. And then if you look at from seventh to eighth grade, our ranks would go like sixteen and twenty-first in ELA in math and seventh. And then eighth, it's thirty-third and forty-fifth in the state. So there's a, a little drop there, right? Which I imagine you're seeing, you all gonna work on. I guess my ask would be that we know, cause I, I think this is a concern of some of the people in our community.
Sure.
Would be like, and, and I want to give you the full year, it's a meeting with the department heads and everything. But like next June or next September, like, yeah, we found the problem and what are we changing? So I think that would just be an ask for you guys to report back, cause I think people would wanna hear. You know, not getting too honest in education, like I'd probably geek out about that with you, but just like.
Right.
Kind of what we're doing to, with a couple areas of opportunity. And again, I just see a couple on there.
Right, makes sense.
My, my only, um, I, I echo that if, if we are going back even just initial data, strengths or gaps, anything jump off the page already?
Or is it? Yeah, there's a couple that, that we noticed in mathematics that it's just one or two things. Either it's something that we don't go deep into, it's a topic that we cover, maybe not enough. And maybe not, you know, make sure the kids are learning everything about. We're just maybe a surface level coverage of something that the state might, might think is more important than we do. So kind of relook. So kind of relooking at that, or it's just missing completely from what we're looking at. So we might have a complete gap in the curriculum that we don't touch upon, something that we need to look at. So I think that's what we're looking at right now, is trying to fill those gaps, which are fairly easy to do. And some of the other things that Bill was talking about will take a little bit more time.
And the only one that I, without highlighting the negative, but the one trend I saw was the not meeting expectations. It seemed each year, with the exception of a high school, it's going up, you know, one, two, three, like, or the three buckets. Just scanning it, and I'm just more, like, I wonder, is that, like, what do we do on that? So, like, two, four, six?
Go back to, sorry.
Yeah, and that's the one I saw.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Like each one, it was, it's like, we are always going to look at your upper two, it's just that, that's the tendency. But you always want to make sure we're identifying those not meet, not meeting students and
The tool itself allows us to really look at that in terms of where, where are those, who are those kids, first of all? We always knew that, but now it's just so concise. But also looking it down in terms of, do they fit a certain subgroup, for instance? Is there a certain pattern? And that's, that's a level to, allows us to really target and look at those kids in terms of who are those, those six percent that are in that group.
Yeah, that, that one is interesting, because that one, it's a little more about working, you know, sometimes it's the curriculum. It's, hey, maybe the, the example you gave with math, maybe the way their testing shifted, you know, like that could be one. This is the one that's, okay. We, as a district, I think we're, they're never going to, I don't think we're going to fall into that category. It's like, yeah, who are those kids?
So we've done, as I mentioned earlier, the bootcamps that we've done in the summertime. So this is one of the data points we use to decide who gets invited into that, that program in the summer. So we've, we've done that, we've looked at some of those, those students that need that additional support. And then just sometimes it's just getting a double dose of instruction over the summer, so there's not summer loss on some of these, you know? So Mary's done a great job with that program the last couple of summers, and it's worked well.
Yeah, no, it's, it is great that you have access to that. You know, and is it you and your leadership, or you and your key, like, do they give access?
Yeah.
To that tool, yeah, to the tool.
So right now, it's leadership. I actually had a meeting, I meet with faculty advisory every month. And last month, I opened it up, and so the teachers got to see it for the first time. And they could have stayed for hours looking at, you get lost in it. I mean, you start looking at, you really get lost in it. So I think we're going to, once we, once we're comfortable with it and using it and get all the data, we're going to be working. Christine's been working with the department chairs and doing that kind of thing with them and the principals. So I think we'll probably get it down to the classroom level at some point this year.
And I, I mean, I asked you, that, you said next time.
Whenever, yeah, whenever you folks want to do it, we focus on student growth percentile.
I think the earlier, the better, if you guys can. But again, what, what I think I'm interested in, people are interested in, is like, get the data, but then I trust our professional teachers, like, what are we doing to change it? I think people want to peek behind the curtain a little bit, like, what are we doing to fix the weaknesses? So that's, you know, the student, what do we call it, the student growth percentage of data is good. So I think the earlier, the better. But then I'd be really interested in like, kind of looking behind the curtain on what you all did to like, what's going on? And, you know, whatever, wherever we have opportunities to.
Yeah, like I think of it, and I was just scrolling around, that how we use the data. That, you know, that's where, what are their strengths, what can we do better, are there trends? We don't need to, in this meeting, dive into the data, just, hey, this is what we're discovered. And yeah, I would say towards this, you know, whatever time you need to do.
Yes, that makes sense.
But, you know, maybe one, at least once before the school year ends.
So Christine's meeting with department chairs and teachers now, so they're just going through that data. So I would think, you know, sometime this spring, we'll be able to present something with that.
I agree.
Yeah. And do you want to do a student growth at the next meeting? That's, that's fine with us if you want that.
I, like, I like, I mean, I'm primarily, I just, what I'm putting in my notes is that item analysis. Being able to speak to that. What are our strengths, what can we do better, are there trends, do we need to make adjustments? Like that, you know, I don't have the other members.
Yeah, I'm student growth, next meeting.
Yeah.
As long as we'll see it early.
Sure.
There's a feedbacks on this, and then in the spring, like, how are we going to fix it?
Perfect. Yeah, that makes sense to us.
Yeah, no, thanks for clarifying.
You good? Okay. Thank you. We'll get the next one up here.
You can stay out for the budget?
I am. Staying up. All right. So as you know, each December, we do our initial fiscal year draft of the budget. So this is our, our draft, and this is the process to the date. So at this point, the principals, directors, and department chairs have developed their budget. They do that at the building or department level. And then they meet with Michael and I, and we go through their budgets and review the requests. And then the last, you know, three to four weeks, we've looked at developing our initial or draft FY25 budget, which we're going to show you now. As you know, this is our first pass, is our draft budget. So it's not going to be what we end up with, whether it's in January or in May, we never end up with this number. The next six weeks, we're going to fine tune what we do, look at the requests again, and prepare the super tense recommended budget that takes place on the twenty-fifth of January. And then at that point, you folks, if you vote to accept it, take ownership of it. And then just a reminder, the budget's not final until the annual town meeting vote. So this, you know, we, this is really taking all the numbers in the budgets, everything we have. Michael putting together all the personnel, putting all that together into, into one, into one budget. But a lot of work needs to be done to get to where we need to be. So some of the initiatives, the strategic initiatives that we have in the FY25 initial budget, full day kindergarten. So I know that's something in our strategic plan, that we're looking to offer a tuition-free full-day kindergarten at some point. What this initial FY25 budget does is it starts a three-year phase-in of that goal. So it allows us a couple of things. One, the assumption that we're making here is that we're going to reduce the amount that we're charging for full-day kindergarten tuition. And we're taking full-day kindergarten teachers and putting them back in the budget, two of them. So some will still stay in the revolving, but we're going to put two back in the budget. I think school safety is something that we've, we focused on, and that is part of this budget as well. Professional development funding, our capital budget in solar energy projects, which are all in our strategic plan, which are, are parts of this budget, the initial budget. So when we develop this, we made some assumptions that our federal entitlement grants will be level funded. So those are, you know, ninety-four, one forty-two is our big one, our special education one that we pay a lot of, of our teaching assistance out of. Chapter seventy is our state money, we're assuming that will be level funded. Reduction in revenue due to possible full-day kindergarten tuition decrease. And circuit breaker is the money that we use to offset special education costs will be funded at seventy percent. And we're hoping for seventy-five, but the assumption we made during this was seventy percent for circuit breaker. Our revenue, we projected state and federal grants, seven hundred thousand. So that's a little bit lower than it was last year because we have no more S R funding. Tuitions are pre-K and kindergarten is lower because we're ma- making the assumption that we're going to reduce the amount for tuition each, for each student. School lunch is still staying strong at nine hundred thousand, and that's all federal reimbursement money. Again, we don't charge for lunch here in Massachusetts anymore. But we get federal reimbursements from, from the federal government based on the lunches that we sell. Athletics, that's all your fees, your receipts, your private grants and gifts. Most of that is MCP and PTO. And then circuit breaker, which is the money that we use to offset special education at seven hundred thousand. So our drivers, I should say. Moved online, but it didn't move up there. Our budget drivers for FY25, personnel, transportation, it says twenty-four, it should be twenty-five. Personnel, transportation, student services. Typically, our budgets are eighty to eighty-four percent of personnel and salaries. Our transportation will go up as it has the last couple of years for both general transportation and special education transportation. And we're seeing a rise in student services out of district tuitions that will, we're looking at a really big number right now for an increase for next year. And we're hoping to fine tune that over the next six weeks. But we're, we're looking right now at about a half a million dollar increase in special education out of district tuitions right now. So the approved budget in FY24 was forty-one million, one seventy-six, our initial budget.
Generally speaking, that eighty-four percent. You know, if you're saying transportation's going up, student service is going up, is that, is eighty-four percent typically?
Eighty to eighty-four percent.
There's that very
Yeah.
Theoretically, that, that may drop a little.
Could, yeah, typically, usually eighty, sometimes as high as eighty-four percent is going to be what you, you have in staff and personnel in any school budget, not just ours. So that number for FY24 was forty-one, one seventy-six. Our initial budget this year, again, this will not be the number that you see in January. It will be high still probably because of what I've talked about, those drivers, but it won't be the forty-three million, six forty-one. So it increased to two point four million or five point nine nine percent. If you remember, the Warren Committee had, had put out that they're looking at keeping us around four point one percent. So that five point nine nine percent increase includes level service of all of our current staff and programs. The increases to special education tuition, increase to instructional software and software licenses, which we're seeing those costs going up dramatically. The cost of living increase, steps, lanes, and longevity for our contact, our CBAs. Collective bargaining agreements, and increase to transportation, increase to supply and services, everything costs more as we know. And then we put an increase to field maintenance, our baseball field, shilling field is in rough shape. So we put, we put some money in the last couple of years, but we need to do some more maintenance for this year. And then we've, we've put it on the capital, long-term capital plan for the town to either replace that turf or put in a traditional grass baseball field. But we need to do something because it became unplayable at one point last year. And the issue around that is, is that when the field was built, it's grass in the outfield, turf in the infield. Kids wear metal spikes because if they're going to play in the outfield, they need metal spikes. If they're pitching, it's a dirt mound, you gotta wear metal spikes there. And you can't expect those kids to wear turf shoes, so those metal spikes are just totally ripping up the turf. It's, it's in pretty rough shape. So we need to do some work there. When we did our field study, is that seven years ago, Michael, eight years ago? Before we did the high school field over, that was part of our field study. At that point, they told us we had six to seven years left, so we're, we're coming up to that point of needing to replace, or do some major replacements to that field. So as we know, the, the process continues with our upcoming meetings. We'll have meetings with the Warren Committee and town officials. Public hearing is on Thursday, the twenty-fifth, and the annual town meeting is on the sixth. So we have a lot of work to do between now and January twenty-fifth to get this closer to the four point one number. But there are some definite drivers that are going to prevent us from getting there real quick. So happy to answer any questions that you may have on it.
My two are just, so you said, we're looking at six hundred thousand, we're trying to reduce tuition in that goal of three years away. What was it last year, do we know?
Eight hundred, Michael? Nine hundred?
But, but that's good enough for me.
Yeah, it was eight or nine hundred last year, yeah. Yeah, so we're going to, you know, we're presenting to you, but one of the things that we're looking at is, right now, look, we charge thirty-five hundred for preschool, for kindergarten tuition. We're looking at dropping that by a thousand to twenty-five hundred for next year. So that will, we'll still have money to offset the cost of, of some teachers. But we do have two teachers that are typically paid for with tuition in this five point nine nine budget as we do a three-year phase into a no-cost full-day kindergarten. We could never do it all at once, it'd be over five hundred thousand dollars to do it all at once, so we're going to phase that in. Right, right.
Then my second question was just, the baseball field, like, you have a ballpark number, I would be, you have to rip up, like, project, or, just like?
Yeah, one's turf and one's grass, right? What was the? Oh, no, it was, it was close to the three hundred. Yeah, close to three hundred thousand for grass. And over a million for replacing the entire turf. But I think you have to make a decision whether to do one or the other. You can't do the hybrid you have now, it's just not working.
I think that's the only field I've ever seen.
I've never seen one. No, you really don't. I've never, I've never seen one like that. Trying to get the sign that's out there. Two thousand seven, two thousand eight, somewhere around that, two thousand nine, something way around there. So it's, it's definitely past its useful life. But it really became a safety issue this past summer. At the end of the season this past summer, it became a safety issue. So we had to, I think we've done two different repairs that were nine thousand each, just to get the turf around home plate and the turf around the bases, because second base wears out because of sliding with metal spikes in the second base on turf. It's just not made for that. But you can't blame the kids on that because they're going to have, they're going to have metal spikes to play the outfield or pitch. Can't be switching shoes in the middle of the game. It's just the, the design that happened from the beginning, and it worked out so well. Right, and that's later, yeah. So retirements, we do have a couple right now, and there could be some, you know, coming up. We don't know yet, but we definitely have two right now. You know, I, I think what we're trying to do now is decide and figure out, because we ask teachers in the fall if they're going to be moving horizontally on the pay scale. And sometimes people plan on that, but then when it comes down to it, they didn't take the class or some, so they don't, not going to move horizontal. So then we recover money from that too, you know? So we have to wait for that to take place a little bit to see what we can do there. One little caveat to all this is that the directors and the principals and the department chairs have asked for positions, additional positions. None of those are in here yet. So this is just what we have here. This is the level service of the staffing and the programs we have right now. So that's what the next six weeks are, is to kind of go through and work through a little bit with some of the requests that the principals and directors have had. And there will be a slide on the twenty-fifth of the ones that aren't included. You know, there'll, there'll be a slide that says, this is what was requested, and they did not make the final cut to. Now, after, you guys can decide that that should be in there, and you put them back in. But at this point, we're going to go through and decide which ones that we think are the, the biggest priorities for the district next year.
And this may, my, the full-day kindergarten, is there a vote out there that the state would fund portion of that?
Well, I mean, they've been talking about that for a long time. Used to also give us six hundred thousand dollars a year in state increases, now they give us sixty-five thousand a year in state increases. So, I mean, I don't know. I wouldn't bet on that, you know, that's for sure. But, you know, we'll get into what it will do, will affect our chapter seventy, once we go all full day for free, will affect that in a positive way. But we won't get into that too much tonight, but it will eventually impact us in a positive way. But the timing, I won't get into it, but the timing of our budgets here, it's not going to be great for us. It'll impact, the town will get more money than school district will, so. That's how that will play out, unless we have town meeting in June, which I don't think that's going to happen anytime soon.
Just those two retirements you mentioned, are those, those are not in here, right? But we're like, no, we'll probably save those two jobs, or not? Or did you take?
So they're in there. So, yeah, so they're in there, so they're replaced with a, a lower pay scale.
Right.
Right, so they're already, they're already in there.
So they're already in there. Maybe one from a hundred to six, I don't know.
Sixty-five, seventy, yeah. Yeah, exactly. So we got some work to do, as you can see. We'll be, we'll be doing that the next five to six weeks, and we'll get you a different number in January. And, you know, if you have any recommendations as we go through, prior to the twenty-fifth, just let me know. Michael and I can work on those. But once you guys take it over after the public hearing, you know, it's all. You know, it's all. Whatever the priorities you think are important. There is not a communications person there, well. There is not one in there, and there's not gonna be one in there on the twenty fifth either. Exactly.
What's the, you know, like the, so the turf versus grass battle? Like the, the annual maintenance, like, that's the battle, right? I mean, kids can play in the ring, but also like the annual maintenance, because you just said one, one or three hundred.
Yeah.
Like, what's the annual maintenance to model, like, to keep a field? You guys know that, like, generally?
Yeah, we have all that.
What we're saying now is not too much in the weeds. We're gonna move on.
I don't know if you have any of that stuff with you, but. Watering. Water's expensive. Right, yeah, pretty much. I mean, those soccer fields behind Wheel are in beautiful shape, but they have a lot of maintenance on those. Yes, and they do an incredible job with them. Those are beautiful fields, but they, they spend a lot, and there's a lot of hours put on that, those fields. Anything else?
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Time change? It ha, who, um, I know the, the time change Jeff, I know that, that's been. Call it your initiative, was, not, not initiative, it's the wrong word, but, um, you know, beginning of the exploration surveys. Oh, okay, got it, got it, got it. Yeah, okay, school committee, uh, that, that given, I just read it. Okay, got it, great. Yeah, okay, yeah, the, um. I think that, that's amongst group and. All of us to, to put this together, um. Seven o'clock is great, six o'clock, and do we have our preferences to six or seven?
I'm in for six.
I'm glad to do either. That six is better.
Tim could just do that, yeah, for sure.
Yeah, we just have to get used to it, no more than dinners. Uh, yeah, and unless Leo's violently opposed. See, we'll, we'll hear from him tomorrow. Policy, uh, but that sounds great. Look at this, Diana, here. We were waiting, I was gonna wait till the end to kind of welcome you. Get here, things have changed, just like that. Okay, and, uh, Will, we wanted to talk about, um. Transitioning you into financial secretary. You know, and recognizing that. Logistics, family, other things may happen, or we need someone else to stand in. But, uh, you know, but they're happy.
Just you and I talked about it. Happy to be named it, but I'm not around. In the summer, and I'm not, it's, you know, I don't know, all the people listening at home, right? It's like, once a week, we have to go sign something on Tuesdays. Uh, when I joined, it really feels like there should be a, a better way to, like, to do it online, but I know we went back and forth a little bit on that. But I'm happy to be appointed it, but it'll be like, oh.
Yeah, give it, give it a try. I think we, we're, um, it's evolving where we could. Sign, you know, the M O D E and the B I N. It's evolving where that actually now it's being shared in advance, I've been covering. The last couple of weeks, so you can, you can do some review. And, um, Michelle would probably speak to it, because you, you did it most recently, the long period. I just stood in a little bit, well, but there is, for a little bit, going in, getting, going through it, there's, there's something there, and it's just. Like, I've, I've learned over the last few weeks about, so, so that, you know, I think that, uh. They haven't gone to completely digitize it, I think. Partially, for the reason, some of it is the warrant, they just don't have everything. Yeah, you get it. So, so, um, I guess that, that's, uh. We have brought it up, but we, we had a good, a discussion, a lot of times it's the. You know, the newer members and Diana, depending how things shake out, it wouldn't make sense. So, um, I guess we'd take, uh, if other any nominations.
Sure, I'd like to nominate Will Horn to be the financial secretary of the school committee.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And it's.
Tuesday.
Kind of a sad eye, you hear that?
Aye, I guess.
Oh, wait, it'll be the five and one if I'm home, it's just like, a lot of good vacations.
Yeah, I don't get there before, like, is it, the doors don't open up though?
No, no, I'm not, I'm not worried about that.
Michael's there, seven. Get a shout out. Okay, and other items since posting? I don't have any, Mr. Chair.
And, all right, going to old business, strategic plan.
So in your materials, uh, you have the screenshots of the revised dashboard. So if you take a look at that, and if you have any feedback or questions or comments, we'd like to get it live as soon as we can. Um, what we did was changed, um, the way that it looked, with the structure of the timeline and the status and the notes, we moved that around a little bit, so we didn't have a notes area before. And some of the feedback, uh, that you folks gave me is that it made sense to have a notes area because. You know, you might want to put additional things, like we, working on this, uh, second half of the year, or, uh, this will go into next year, just so if someone looks at it, they can understand, well, it's in progress, well, what does it mean, like? How, how long before it's actually finished? So. We thought that was a really good idea, and then moved the timeline right next to the strategy, so it, it made sense to have those connected. Uh, but, uh, this performance index on the top, uh, the, the number where it says the percentage is complete. Uh, Neil has assigned a factor to each one of, whether it's in progress has a factor. Uh, if it's not started yet has a factor, it's completed has a factor, and then he just put that all together, and then that's how we get to the percentage, so. Happy to change it around again if you folks want to, or whatever you'd like to do, but we'd love to get it live so that parents and everyone else can see it.
I think the notes thing is an awesome, uh, because obviously I was involved with this, and we're like, how do you quantify all these things in over years? And I didn't, but I think that's a great app.
Yeah, I agree, agree. Yeah, right, right. It's a great question. What do you folks think? And I. We, we can, what will we do in that central office? So, yes, whatever you think, we can, we can do that.
I think it would be natural if we're doing those three updates, of course, and then add the math.
Yeah.
Right, like, it's. I mean, like, any time I have a scorecard, it's, it's like, you like. You look, it's like a list, you're like crossing, oh, it's done, right, hey. So I, I would, that's what I would think would happen. I think it just depends. I, I don't think it's.
But it's a good point, right? If you're, if you're someone in the public and you look at it, and you're wondering, well, I thought I heard that, I read something that was done, and it's not done on here, like, I, I can see that being a problem.
Like, I think that the other thing is just in line with how we, when we were out at the, um. The event. And they, they shared other districts' kind of strategic plans, scorecards. And we continue to weave some of this into the, into the website, so it's easy, you go over place, okay, here's this. I think, what does that mean? I can see that, and then right below that, okay, here's the scorecard. So, so, you know, we, we get a better understanding, like, even little things. Hello, um, Christine, as we went to the MCAS, we never. Continuing to weave it in. And I, I'm not sure that maybe that's something we talk about.
Sure.
But how do we continue to make it easier?
So we did put, I'm just trying to get it up right now, uh, we did put a button right on the front page of the website, the search strategic plan. So you can just go right on our, so you have to search for it, it's not like it's hidden, there are a lot of districts that have it hidden. We wanted to put it right out there, and we have one of the banners that goes through is. You see it? It takes you right to it. And then at the picture banner, there's actually one that has strategic plan too, so that's. Yeah, so once, we'll do a button for the score, for the scorecard too, yeah, so it'll be right there on the front, everyone can see it. Yeah, I, I need to. Yeah, so if anyone has any, any more feedback on it, let me know. So either the end of next week, or probably over vacation, we'll just finish it all up, and then we'll put it up in January, so that's where it will run.
Yeah, I, I'll share a comment too, like, what I appreciate, Jeff and I talked about it. And what I, so sometimes you see leaders, I, I do this a lot in the space. Say shy away from that? No, do I really? I, I see from Jeff, he's saying, oh, I want it, I want it out there, right, and, and I think that's, you know, um, what I think is, is driving accountability. With your leadership. That, that's what I, I heard, and I think that was. I think it's great, and I also, what we've talked about was, let's get that scorecard out there, but allow for maybe end of year, one round and say, hey, are we sure? You know, we're doing this right, and ma- maybe the way we did that performance index wasn't perfect, so I, I think that just is, is a better.
Be a great topic for the summer, right? We get together and look at it.
You know, that, that's more about refined. And I, because I hate when measurement to, you know, managing to the number, but not. I think that's great.
Okay, that's good, thank you. Anyways, if you think of something after a submit email, we'll figure it out and make some changes if we need to, but I think. Ready to get it going.
And our, um, so the school building committee, I, I, for the minute, I thought we had to add something for information or, uh, items since posting, but we have it on our agenda, yeah, so. Who wants to? Yeah, I, I think there wasn't much interaction with them leading up to it. Wasn't shy. I would think, you know, as the S B C gets together, there's some in town saying, hey, you run this alone, you should run it alone. I don't know how we do it.
Very high level, like, we should do it ourselves, but there's no. Right, so kind of having these two schools of MSBA or not MSBA, I think we need to find. In my opinion, right?
Yeah, and can we do it means, can we? A, obviously, design something that works. We feel like the hardest part with or without is sixty-six percent. The town saying yes, eighty. You know, the, the good news about MSBA, it seems like percentages are actually going up a little bit. But, yeah, I just like the costs. And interest rates.
Can you re, like, I don't know this process enough. But now that we didn't get in, and something new cycle begins in January, like, we could technically reapply.
Yes, absolutely.
No, okay, we will, so we will probably reapply again, just to see if we're on their list.
So I'll bring it to you in February, probably. And so it's, it needs three approvals, it needs the school committee, the select board, and the superintendent.
Got it.
So if those three agree, then we can apply something. So that's what my plan is to bring it to you in, in February.
Yes.
Yeah, one thing I did notice on the list of schools is that there were a lot of high schools on there, and we've always talked about that high schools are super expensive now, and there's X amount of money. And if there's a lot of high schools that are gonna be funded, they take a lot of that money away. You know, so that leaves less for elementary schools if they really need the project, so I saw Needham as a middle school. And there were a lot of cities that have high schools, I think Milford has a high school in there, um, so the. High schools are running three to three hundred to five hundred million right now. So that's taking a big chunk of money.
Did they share any of that?
Yeah, that's a good question. I'm not, I'm not sure if they, I've never seen them share what the projects were that didn't get funded, but I can.
Numbers from communities that didn't get in were asked questions in my head, I'm like.
Right, exactly.
Where was that? Yeah, it was, it was interesting in advance, going to that Friday afternoon session, two or three. You kind of wonder, and there were a lot of questions being asked by districts that were waiting right here. So, yeah, I'm, I'm sure, you know, we look forward to. Where, what's gonna happen next meeting for them is. And my, my assumption would be, worst case, we should be at least preparing to submit. Let's say, you know, this is ten, that is individual, and at least, um, we don't have to cram for that exam. And it's, I, what I've seen, though, it's not unusual that you may have to go, you may go two or three years. You know, I don't know if they ever give feedback, was it, was it more, hey, the. It's not, we, we know you qualify, it's eventually the funding is so much. You have a beautiful school and you keep applying, say that's.
I think for us, it was a no vote. I mean, that's, they just want to make sure that. Before they allow you back into the program, that your town is all set and ready to go. And that's what they want, and they, we met with them in August, you know, they, they were very impressed with what's happened so far in the town, but. They just keep working toward that, making sure that we can demonstrate to them that they're committed to getting a new school. For renovation of existence.
So communicate, community engagement and communication.
Sure, we had our first informal conversation this past week. Um, it went well, by Christine Power, um, nobody registered, he had publicized it in the hometown weekly on the patch, I have computers and shared on the blog. Uh, went out in an email from Dr. Marsden, and then we posted on all of our social channels, like, so I feel like, uh, we notified everybody a lot. Um, and they did have anything they wanted to come chat about, and that's fine for now. Um, Christine hopped on, if anybody wanted to ask any questions about literacy. The next one is going to be on. Tuesday, January sixteenth, uh, that'll be in person at town hall, more community room, which is right in the door on the right, at ten AM. And then just, PTO mapping with Diana being here, so, Kristen, I think, had Dale, right? We have middle school. So, we basically partner with the PTO, and we try to go to a meeting in the beginning of the year, and then the end of the year, I feel like we're next, hopefully, know each other enough.
Yes, so what school name? Dale, Dale, okay, yeah, that's fine.
No, and, and this is also just, like, this is something we've added, we did, but it, some of the work that we're putting in place, it's helpful. One of the citizens was asking about an issue, and she said, you know, I actually talked to Will. And it came up though, because you were, went to one of the PTO meetings. So, it's like, you know, we see our face, we become a little more familiar, and it's, it's, we want to promote engagement. We also want to promote locally, the school level, as much as possible.
Yeah, I mean, I, like, I've sat on PTO for, like, the last year, so I thought it was helpful when people started coming, just so you could hear what each PTO was doing, but then also get update. What was going on, yeah.
I can do an update on the middle school CPAC.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, we, we'll also sit, like, because I, I think CPAC is one we, we just, we're having some representation, right?
Yeah, and just the, the notes I had, I met with Melissa and Joe last week, a couple weeks ago. The one, the one asked for our agenda was they want to give out inclusivity award, and hand out the June meeting, so Jeff, I just wanted to request them that that would be on our June, June meeting. They're going to take applications, it's, it's a cool award, and that, like, anyone in the community can, can win it, and anyone in the community can nominate someone. And then they're going to handle, like, they're going to do all the legwork, they just want a time to present it here.
Great.
But again, it'll be like our first, hopefully, annual inclusivity award for anyone that is doing things around inclusion in our school. But like, anyone can be nominated, and anyone can do the nominating, so, so you can reach out to, to those guys, the CPAC. The other thing was just, just kind of letting people know it's out there, because like, it's, you know, your kid's in a certain school, there's a PTA, you go to that, CPAC, you know, touches all our grades. So, they have parent groups, there's like a site person at, at every school. And then the other thing they're doing that I think is really cool is they're creating support groups for parents or, or students with the same diagnoses. Because I think that can be very different, obviously, IEPs, five oh fours cover lots of, of different diagnoses. So, I, I would just say, you know, if you know me, reach out to me, but if you know Melissa, Joe, they're doing like awesome thing. I was super impressed in all the things, not just in the schools, the things they were doing, like, like, what's our summer program called? But like, the one that goes on.
Extended school year.
What's that?
Extended school year.
No, sorry, like, the FAF camps, like, the Medfield, like, Melissa's working on those to help, help them, like, have more options for kids with disabilities there as well. So, I was super impressed with those guys, like, impressed, you know, but it's awesome. If you need help, if you're wondering anything about CPAC, go to meetings, reach out to me, Melissa, Joe, that'd be awesome. And then, the middle school PTO, we just said the half day, they did Italian grocery, they're an awesome spread for teachers. And as a teacher, I could say those are awesome and appreciated. You know, it's a lot different, and, you know, everything is nice, but like, I saw pictures of the spread that they put out in Italian grocery, and that's a cool thing to have when you come to work. After the kids leave, and you go to PT, to your PD, whatever it is. And the only thing that I got through that was that MCP is, is fu, funding another water filling station, which I think is awesome. I think we're trying to get rid of kids drinking water, and those are popping up. But, all good things, if, if you are a parent with questions, find the PTO, reach out to us. Again, this whole thing, I think Michelle started this, you know, when she got elected, but more community engagement would be awesome. And if you have questions, like, don't worry about, come see people, there are people working hard to help you support our kids, and to help support our kids.
That's great, thank you, thank you for that. Yeah, I've always thought of CPAC, learn a little more how they're doing things. But that's kind of, we had a meeting a little while ago with CPAC, some of the leaders, what are those best practices? Nicole does a great job, Nicole Drummond, kind of, at least, a, a PTO, and bringing that, but it was, CPAC is pretty, pretty special. Okay, and thank you, as always, the social media, I'm not surprised that you were out on, on their site. I always get the acronyms messed up. M A S C versus.
Yeah, no, so that, that worked. Do you get that email every day from them? That's really good. Do you, everyone get that? You can sign up for email, M A, M A S C, and it gives you education, the news across the country, and then say, it's really good. Every day, they send out at seven oh five every morning, it's an X, yeah, it's X.
So, now, school start times.
There we go.
Opposed to school committees.
Right, right. So, we're, we're gathering data at this point, we have sent a survey out to our, all of our staff members. Everyone that works in the Medfield Public Schools has gotten the survey. And we really want to take a, a look at it as a more qualitative survey, so it's a lot more work that way, but I think you get richer data. And basically, the question was, a, as we look at our strategic initiative around school start times, what should we be thinking about? What's on your mind in regards to that? Then, second question is, any other comments you want to provide? So, there's a lot, you know, there's a lot of information there. But it's good, I think we have a hundred and eighty or so so far. It ends tomorrow at five o'clock, so I'll send out a reminder in the morning in case anyone hasn't done it yet. But now we're just going to go through and code it all, and just try to see what those themes are. I mean, I think they're pretty common themes, looking at, you know, what it's going to do to, a lot of people actually positive about it. You know, I think the first one that came through, someone said, we need these sleepyheads to sleep a little bit longer before they come in here first, you know? But I think people are just looking at how it impacts them, which is an important thing, right? How are we going to plan for this, plan for that? I actually sent out a, a qualifying email, because it was a theme that was coming out, that, that people were making the assumption that we would just flip times. And we would have elementary kids come in at seven thirty, and high school kids come in at eight thirty, and that's not what we're looking at, really, I mean, we're not looking at doing that at all. In fact, we've talked about places that have done that before, and hasn't gone well with having young kids there in the morning, early up for buses, and then home early, only two thirty, that's not what we're trying to do. So, we're getting all that information, Michael and I have met with a bus company, and just said, this is what we're thinking, can you guys accommodate this? They've come back with some really good ways to accommodate us with these start times, so I don't think that's going to be an issue at all for us, as far as whatever we choose at the start time and end time. I think that's going to be good. People are still concerned about after-school stuff for both their families and students here, we're going to kind of work with that a little bit. So, the next phase, once we get all that information, we have the bus stuff, is that probably mid-January, we'll, we'll put it, something out for, kind of, getting the community together. So, we'll have some students that will be a part of it, I know there's a couple that were doing a project on school start times last year, in the juniors. They said to me, if you have a committee, we want to be on it, so we'll have, you know, definitely have some kids on there, that will be a part of that committee, and we'll have kids, parents, administrators, et cetera. Just get that going, and then, we have the goal, the charge of that committee, to come to this committee with a recommendation to, of what we should do. It'd be the twenty-five, so.
The whole.
A whole year.
Year to. Yes, just to make it.
Right. Right, September twenty-five.
Yes.
And theoretically, is that, if it, for whatever reason, slid into October, or we voted on? Or, that, are we going?
I think that's fine, I think our target is June sixth, I think it's June sixth.
So, even if it was October, theoretically, it could still be September.
I think so, I think, I mean, I think there's a certain point for us, things, it's like, a, a high level of calendar year, for sure.
Right.
So, yeah, I think we just have to be aware. But I think it's giving the community, parents, businesses, everybody, on top of the teacher lobby, for making plans, and we're going to make.
I'm just wondering, like, I think about it, is if you gave a recommendation, would we be ready to vote? Or would it, would it make sense, essentially, to give a recommendation? May, or, or either May, or if it's June before you're prepared, would there be one round of, I won't say survey, you know, some way to make sure you're bringing any?
We have two meetings in June, I think the goal was to get, I think we have two meetings in June, I think the goal was to get the, get the recommendation at the first meeting, and to get to the second. Pretty sure that's what we talked about, well, we can sort of look at that, I mean, if we're ready in May, then sure, yeah. Yeah, and just more thinking about it is, sometimes, in spite of all our efforts to gauge, now the recommendation's there, voting.
What?
Yeah, right, for sure, so it's like, okay, now everybody knows this is what the recommendation is, this is what it would look like. We want to allow for a little bit of a period to just gain it, but, but it sounds, so, so it sounds good, I mean, it sounds like.
Right. Agreed, and I think of it like, hey, we think our recommendation is looking like this, that, that's, and it could, it could be fine too, it could be, we're ready in June. And, and if it's the first meeting in June, we can all say, hey.
So, could we treat it like the strategic plan, and when we gave a two-week or three-week window for people to give us feedback? So, if, if we're thinking where we are in, say, May, send something out, we're going to make this recommendation to the school committee in June. Give us some feedback on what you think at this point, maybe that's the way to do it too.
Yeah, that's how I, that, that's what I'm thinking, yes, which is, you know, so we're not, worst case, we're, we're like, well, we're not quite ready to vote, if we've been able to get that feedback, so it is.
And it's out there right back. You have feedback, come talk to us right now. I mean, the surveys go out to the teachers, and we'll put surveys out.
Parents, we'll do that.
You have strong feelings about this, you're listening to this, like, come find me, come find the school committee, like. Oh, whatever the feedback. Strong feelings either way, but like, let's start going now, so we can vote on this, June or not, July or October, whichever way we decide, we'll go decide.
Yeah, I, I, my question, I'm not trying to, I, it also, that's kind of just the vibe of it so far, you're not hearing. We're doing what? Education first.
Informational items. So, I have one that was in your packet, the new NASDAQ projections came out. So, that was in your packet to take a look at, to see where we are, there is a, there is a kindergarten class coming up, they're projecting to be very, very good. I would say that those were COVID kids. Is it two, two twenty-eight? That would be twenty-six, twenty-seven. And those are actually kids already born, so it's not a projection, but those have to be COVID kids born in twenty-one. And that's a big group coming through, but it goes right back down again, so, that is just going to be a bubble going through. You could. That would be the third year, so that could be, depending on how budgets play out, that could be the last year of charging or the first year of modular. Any something? Yeah, sure. I've already had that conversation, so we're, looking at a way of doing it without putting modulars or something, we don't want to spend money on it, so we're going to try to, it might be inconvenient for folks for a year, but, and the other thing is that it's going to go through the school, right? All the, all the, so, every year, it's going to, that big group's going to go through, so, we'll have to make some plans or arrangements. You see, they still have a ten-year change of four point eight percent increase. Now, if you remember back, when we were looking at the building project before COVID, they were projecting fifteen percent over ten years, so, it's definitely dropped off. This away. Yeah, I mean, I think it's, because of the cost of it's based on square footage, so if we have a, we have a smaller footprint, it's not going to be as expensive. We'll cross that bridge, we have. That's all I had. Anything else going on? Yesterday, way in early, what do you think? Do you enjoy this?
Yeah, it's fun.
How do you feel? I, we, we, we have a major issue, we've been collected to ask you about six o'clock.
Oh, six o'clock is great. I got to work at five thirty, so anytime after that, I'm good. The six is great.
Well, all right. Diana, how are you feeling overall?
Good.
Welcome, congratulations. Now your face looks familiar, I've seen it, I think I might do a little while ago.
Yeah.
Yes. Terrible with names.
Yes, you may not put it together.
Okay, you know, yeah, welcome. Seven, yeah, we hear a motion, we appear, now I'm saying.
So moved.
All in favor? Aye, great.